...to order of the Lane County Board of Commissioners. It's Friday, May 8th, and we are here to learn a little bit about Incident Command Systems. And I will, at this time, turn it over to -- that is an odd noise I've never heard in this room.
They're compacting across the street?
Is that what it is? Shakes her door. Sorry for those that are watching on television, but we have an odd rattle going on in the room. And I don't know if it's being picked up by the microphones or not. So, I requested this work session quite a few months back because I had exposure to Incident Command Systems when I was working for Eugene Water Electric Board as that's how they -- what they utilize in their storm response and other emergency responses there. And I've done some of the training, I think, 100, 200 level training at EWEB. And I knew that that's what county uses when we go into response through our emergency management. Focus on everything from windstorms to tsunami alerts to whatever else that might -- wildfires. And it's a system that came up from the Wildland Fire System. Very useful system, but I think one of the things people don't realize is, as the board, we're actually part of that system. And I think we're going to learn a lot today about our role as executives and elected officials in that system, and how that system works, and how we can benefit from it, and understanding who our point of contact are, when something is -- an incident is declared, and how will that system work. So, I'm going to turn it over now. And I think Steve, if you want to introduce our speaker for today in training, and this should be a really interesting day, so.
Sheriff Trap?
Yes. Sheriff, we have a slide for you. Oh, there you go. Todd Manz from the company named Blue Cell has been doing -- this is day two of training that he's been providing to several county staffs from all departments and sheriff's offices as well. Received by two days of training at the city of Eugene, and so he spent most of the week giving Emergency Operations Center management training to the city and county staff. And this is a focused effort on the policy group. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, folks. I know you folks are very, very busy. Just as the preceding comments indicated -- is this in the way? The Incident Command System's certainly been around for a while. And in the post-9/11 era that we live in, it certainly has been trained to now hundreds of thousands of first responders. We see numerous communities on a regular basis going through some level of incident, something that's beyond the norm, and probably getting the attention of the agency administrators for the agencies having jurisdiction. Most recently, certainly, what's going on in Baltimore certainly probably has the attention, right, of their city council, their mayor, their county commissioner, and their governor. All levels of the executive branch of government engaged in that particular instance and scenario. ICS 402, by definition, is a designed two-hour presentation on the Incident Command System that fits into a whole series of trainings that go on depending on the levels of first responders that you have in your community. So, many of them, if not all of them, have to take 100, as was indicated, 200, Single Resource Initial Action, 300, Expanding Incidents. Those are the ones that probably start to get the attention of this body. 400 would be Complex Incidents, where we maybe get some out from the feds and the state simultaneously. The numbering system has 402, I think, in the right spot in terms of the importance of Incident Command, specifically for executives, senior officials. You have a handout, everyone should have a handout, or that folder we give you to stick your handout in. I'll refer you into that, but I'm not going to beat you up with much of the team of slides. It's not really the kind of purpose here. I'll use the slides to kind of move through and talk about some very specific items and topics with regard to this particular subject matter. The other thing that we've designed for you specifically, and as Sheriff had indicated, we've been doing a two-day class that is finishing up this afternoon downstairs. They will finish their course and begin a scenario. You will be presented with the exact same scenario. And so, in about an hour and a half, we're going to actually go down to that room. I'm going to put you in the room with the petition, which is on the other side of the wall, just as if you've come together as a commission because of the same incident. You'll be looking at the incident through your lens, while the EOC room looks at the incident through their lens, and we'll start to interface you together. You may have a question for them, and they may have a question for you. And generally, in scenario play, that's where things kind of take off, when we start to explore the realities opposed to just the lecture piece connected to this particular topic. All right. So, in this presentation, I'm going to talk about Incident Command, and talk about the executive senior officials relative to the ICS, how the responsibilities look depending on the level of government for the executive and senior officials, the basics from there in terms of terminology, and I think that's important, that when you are presented with the idea that the incident commander in the field has something to say or a question, that you have a little bit of an understanding, who is that? And is that different from the operation section chief? And then who's this other guy, the planning section chief, that stopped by to talk to us? For someone to understand and appreciate the finance section chief in these larger incidents. So, we'll look at the basic organizations of ICS, how complexity really works, the influence of complexity, and the difference between a few other specifically titled items. The Emergency Operations Center, certainly, area command, all dates and coordination, these are all terminologies that are pertinent to being able to continue to facilitate taking care of the emergency at all levels of government, because that is important. We have logistics, finance, administrative items, and the types of agency issues that can go on. So, can I get you to just give me a quick introduction? Not so much experience using the ICS, but how long have you been in office? And any experience that you have with incidents specifically, not so much with Incident Command, just so that I have a good understanding of who's in the room? Who would like to go first? Do you have an order that you normally go in? Sometimes I go to places where there's actually an order that we have to go in.
This is a work session, so it's pretty important. We just want to start kind of around the table, so if you want to start, Pat, introduce yourself.
Sure. Pat Farben, in office for 20 years. The former incident commander went through Y2K training.
Okay.
I'm sure things have changed since then.
Not too much. I remember that particular event. I was in the Marine Reserves at the time. We were ready.
Wasn't the -- as the incident commander, when the civil system did that dance?
Okay. Okay. Absolutely. Absolutely. Which direction are we going to go this way?
I assume you already know Sheriff Trap?
I do.
I'm from Lakeview, and so I'm in my second term as planning commissioner. I served 10 years as mayor of City Springfield. The only time we actually exercised the Incident Command was about 10, 12 years ago, something like that. There was a hydrogen truck up there, had to pull over on off 105 and 126 heading over the mountains, and pulled over, it had leaked, and not knowing, could be a dangerous issue. And so, we actually -- Sheriff and the emergency management officer, I think it was Jan Cummins at the time, but is actually a fire chief locally, so then the city becomes the head of Incident Command on that particular thing. So, it was pretty interesting to watch our staff interact and how it all worked, actually because it was still close to 10/11. We received a phone call from Homeland Security.
The National Operations Center, absolutely.
They were pretty concerned, but turned out it was pretty local. It blocked traffic for about, what, eight hours, I'd say? I mean, it was closed down.
Wow.
Because not knowing what was happening.
Sure.
So, it was pretty interesting to watch.
All right. Very good. Thank you, sir.
So, I'm Jay Bozovic. I'm the current chair of the board, and I'm starting my second term, so five years there. And before that, I worked for 13 years at Eugene Water Electric Board and had a long career as a civil engineer. And at EWEB, they started using the Incident Command System after it took the windstorm that kind of threw us into a tizzy where we didn't do quite the best job of customer response and getting to things in correct priority order and all that stuff. And it kind of highlighted the fact that they didn't have a real good emergency response system at EWEB. And we were one of our -- they got -- as head of our construction section at the time, was a volunteer fire chief. We had several volunteer firemen at the time, and they understood ICS and kind of brought it into EWEB, and that's where the training started. And a couple, you know, water main breaks, and in its water main, broken napkin machine, closed up a couple streets, weathered a few places, things like that, you know, declare an incident, somebody's -- you know, the incident commander closing up an incident, saw it, and sort of involved.
All right.
On the periphery of that, usually end up in the planning section.
Okay. Makes sense. And I'll talk about my background in just a second. I'm a planning executive chief, and I love civil engineers. So, yeah, have them come into my section, absolutely.
I'm Pete Stewart. In my 11th year, starting my first full time. Had a little bit of training, I think, when the folks had a September, just a smattering of a little bit of training in those 11 years. Was exposed to a little bit up at the fire up at Oak Ridge here, this flash here, and then had some in my previous life before elected office, I was a business partner in a lobbying business, and we had some -- been training through the Department of Forestry about 10 years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Pete Sorensen. I'm the South Eugene Commissioner on the board. And I was thinking about my first major incident. I got involved in a Russian fishing trawler off the Oregon coast that was fishing within the fishing zone of the U.S. fishermen, and several intoxicated fishermen in Charleston, Oregon decided to solve a problem that they felt the government wasn't solving, and went out and fired on the Russian fishing trawler. And I got a phone call from the State Department about 10:30 at night, you know, "Are you an assistant to the congressman from the 4th Congressional District?" And I said, "Yes, I am." And he said, "Well, we just want you to remain calm. There's a number of American citizens that are shooting a Russian fishing trawler off the Oregon coast. There's no real need for alarm because the Navy and Coast Guard are on the scene." I said, "Oh, and there's no need for alarm? The Russian Navy is also headed toward the area." I said, "Well, that would certainly lower my sense of fear." At any rate, the Russians were shot, a few of them. They were taken to the local hospital. There was a demonstration of why these Russians would be getting medical attention when the whole purpose of going out there was to shoot them. And that was pretty interesting. Coast Guard was involved, the Navy, the State Department, and I suppose lots of other people. But from my standpoint, as a young, then 25-year-old congressional aide, it just brought home just how many agencies are involved in something that could get really big really fast. More up-to-date, I was a senator in the Oregon Legislature and assigned to go on a training mission with the Oregon Army National Guard at Fort Lewis, Washington, to learn more about the integration of the Army and the National Guard. And I've been a county commissioner for 18 years and the chair of the board three times. We've had a number of pretty significant incidents over that period, one of which was the Springfield first and high school shooting. That was a huge thing. 9/11, and also Y2K, and forest fires.
Sure. You have those regular natural threats. Very good.
I'm Steve Moker, ICS. I'm the Lane County Administrator in my second year now here, and then in the county government for about 16 years. I've done the ICS 100 through 800. Kind of means nothing in terms of my actual knowledge today, about five years ago. But when I served in the community in northwestern Nevada for about five years, and it's a high desert climate, but a high propensity for wildfires, as well as flooding, so they had a -- they really integrated a culture there of having ICS training throughout the organization as well as with their board. And so, I got involved in that training there, as well as in a number of actual incidents, wildland fire incidents in particular, that I got pretty good at knowing how that structure functions. Several examples where the board and the administrator and council and clerk were called to emergency meetings to make emergency declarations and take other actions. So, we did a lot of training there and then a lot of execution there, and it was great that this board and organization are starting to talk about how we get prepared for those events before they actually happen.
All right. And sir?
I'm kind of speaking with the county council. At least I have some experience with some kind of critical incident, was prosecuted for 20 years, 25 years, so crime scenes, sheriff, those sorts of things, which we have enough of, it's just the difference.
Right. Understood. Sheriff, anything to add?
No.
Okay. I'm giving you an opportunity to add. I am going to send a sign-in sheet around, because we'll get you an unofficial certificate. Anything for this? I took the center column out. Your email's not applicable. We don't need your email. Just your name and whatever you want on your certificate would be great. You mentioned the number of courses that you went through, and in reality, the 50 slides or so that I'm using are from ICS 400 and ICS 800. So, you have probably seen all of these slides previously. They are in a little bit different configuration to 50 audience. So, my name's Todd Manz again. As Sheriff introduced, I sure appreciate the introduction. I do own a company called Blue Cell. We're based in Denver, Colorado. We're a national training firm. Do business in all 50 states. Got about 70 folks working for me. Oregon's a new state for us as of the last couple of years, but we are making our way around, doing some trainings. I'll be back in a couple weeks in Metford. Came through two weeks ago. Eugene's a really great route for us to get in and out of, for whatever reason, out of Denver, where we're primarily based. We also have an office in Kansas City and Lancaster, Pennsylvania. You see a bunch of my incidents there. I'm a planning section chief by trade. See a number of these with the EOC designation, and or could be ASOC or City Emergency Operations Center, Department Operations Center. As a plan chief, it's interesting, I do get our act with agency administrators quite a bit. And the reason for that is, in the structure, sometimes the incident commander might call upon a plan chief to assist in talking through a plan, talking through a concept, working on objectives, any of those things that the plan chief does. I try to stay away from giving legal advice, so that kind of gets asked, I usually will say, "Well, I'm pretty sure there might be another person around with a little more education on a topic." But it is interesting how those things have to fit together with the Boulder fires here, four mile fires particularly. I worked with the county commission, I think, about three days in a row. I was in the EOC, and I knew those commissioners pretty well, because I'd been in training with them over the years, and they were just comfortable kind of calling down to the floor and saying, "Hey, can you come in? We're trying to think about evacuation, or we're trying to think about reentry, or we're trying to think about some of the things that may need to happen as we move forward into recovery." So, I'm comfortable with the concept of sharing information at this level. Worked with the Denver City Council on occasion, a very interesting city council, as you can imagine, very big city mentality. But nevertheless, I think every time I interact with agency administrators, we have the same reaction and concern. And those are -- I'm not sure why this keeps doing that.
It turns into a mirror so you can see how you look.
Yeah. There you go. When an incident occurs and it rises to a certain level, and we're using the Incident Command System, and we're using it regularly, the professionals out there are using it right now, but at a lower level, to the point that it hasn't reached, you know, us really thinking about it or even knowing about it. When it does, however, reach that little bit larger level, the same concerns, I think, are consistent anywhere that I go in the country. How long is this going to last? Are our citizens, constituents out there being taken care of? And how much is this going to cost? It's not necessarily in that order, but those are the general concerns. And in a representative form of government, as you all very well know, there's an expectation that those elected officials at any level of government are the ones who are going to be executing really the executive branch functions of protecting the public and safety. So, that's why I think it is important that we share this information, that incident commanders understand that, that emergency operations centers understand that, that the buck kind of stops at this level on certain incidents, right, if they get big enough. And sometimes we have to make tough decisions, sometimes we have to look at policy and guidance, or adjustments, or changes in policies and guidance, and that really has to come from the representative form of government. All right, so what is an incident? I guess we have slides there that we could read. I like to read that stuff, too. What kind of incidents can you face here in Lane County? That would be more appropriate. Well, that types of incidents.
Blood.
Fire.
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 Tsunami.
Tsunami, out on the coast, okay? Anything else? I'm sure those are natural disasters. Any man-made disasters come to mind.
Shooting at high school.
Sure.
Hazmat.
Hazmat.
Large gathering incident, Austin City incident.
Okay. Large gatherings of folks. So, in all of those instances, those incidents, what timeframes connected to them? There's complexity maybe connected to it? How long is it going to last? How long do we need to be self-sufficient? When do we know the incident's over? How long the incident lasts, that's relative. I've heard some folks say, "When my phone stops ringing, the incident's over for me." You know? I mean, there's a reality there. That right circle, how long do we need to be self-sufficient? Book answer is 48 to 72 hours. When we say self-sufficient, if we have to start to call on federal assistance, we have to start to call those larger teams and those capabilities, they're not going to be here in an hour necessarily. It's going to take a while for them to get here. And then, when you know it's over? Another premise is, when the last bill is paid, that's maybe when it's over for us, right? Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, what is the dividing line between local responsibility, state responsibility, and national responsibility? I hear, you know, Katrina, national, President flies there.
Sure.
FEMA's very involved, federal agencies, but, you know, we get down to forest fire in the South Hills, it's the Eugene Fire Department.
Sure. The -- I think the threshold really is, once you've expended your capability and probably the capability around you, that's when we kind of move up in the scale. Now, there are some specific incidents where we might have federal or state capability that acts as a first responder. So, for example, with the coast, and you mentioned the Coast Guard. The Coast Guard, as a federal entity, can act as a first responder. That's really not the context in which we're really looking, we're trying to look at this. The context is, we hit the button for mutual aid, and we know how to do that. And if that looks like it's going, even appears that we're going to run through that, then we start to talk to maybe the state to help facilitate. Maybe they've got some resource, but help facilitate. The states can talk to each other. Their mutual aid agreement's called the Emergency Management Assistance Compact. And then ultimately, if we go all the way to the federal level, we'll be looking at something called the National Response Framework. That's the Fed's mutual aid agreement and how they connect to us. So, there are very specific triggers, mechanisms, and routes to make that happen. And I think it's incident-specific, too. You know, with wildland fire, we have a very robust federal system that you're familiar with. How that can really get going and rock and roll, a little bit different than FEMA, but a little bit different if it's an intentional act, but the same premise, I think, is followed. So, ICS, as we look at this slide, what do you think the most important word is on that slide?
Standardization.
Okay? Anybody else? I'm not saying that's not an important one. Any other in town? Management. Standardization and management would be the two consistent words that I hear when we say, "Hey, what do you think about this particular slide?" ICS is a system of management. There's tactical part of it, but it's a system of management all together. In your handout, we can take a quick look. On page one, you've got that history of where ICS came from. The second half of page one, frequently asked questions from executives and senior officials. Then the next page really talks about the 14 features of the Incident Command System. The reason I'm firmly convinced that ICS is a system of management, I bet you you could walk in a U of O third-year business class right now on campus and find them studying eight of these 14 features. It is truly a system of management, using a lot of different genres. In terms of the wildland world, they picked those when they were creating the system, best practices from business, best practice from the military to--
Excuse me for about two seconds, I would dismiss my laundry appointment.
All right. So, look at that when they built the system, to create those best practices. The purpose of it, safety of responders, achievement of tactical objectives, and the efficient use of resources. So, that would be the reason that we do the system. These are the things that get achieved. These are mandates. These mandates really housed in the concept of grant funding. So, every grant in the last 10 years, even closely related to emergency response, the first question is, is your agency or organization NIMs compliant? So, NIMs, one document, about an 800-page document, really talks about the management of domestic incidents. The National Response Framework, another 800-page document, deals with our national preparedness. There are Homeland Security Presidential Directives, there are Presidential Policy Directives, both that in the post-9/11 era, what got the funding rolling and the training and the equipping and the exercising that you see go on a regular basis. The framework itself is broken into these five parts, core documents, emergency function mechanics, and so on and so forth. And it replaces actually a previous plan, the National Response Plan, and that plan represents the Federal Response Plan, which was around probably from the mid-'70s into early 2000s. So, all of these doctrines and guidances work together for us to be more effective, and that's really the reason that we have this emphasis, and the plans emphasize this. Individuals, households, private sector, and non-government organizations at the bottom. Local government, municipalities and counties serve as the first responders. The state government provides support to local government, and we go to the federal government as a last resort. That can happen very quickly, certainly depending on what the problem set is. It could be a few minutes from the beginning of an incident that we're already having that federal conversation, or maybe we handle-- that federal conversation, or maybe we handle it as local government, or maybe with some state system, depends on what it is.
Now, you've worked with those counties out in Colorado with those wildland fires and so on.
Yes.
A lot of these local governments, in our case, the cities are, some of them are quite small, they don't have much in the way of tax base. Where does this, how do you kind of, is there a kind of rule of thumb if it gets, if it's big, it's local, if it's bigger, it's state, if it's really, it's federal? I mean, is there some sort of guideline?
I think it all comes down to how fast you really run through your resources and your capabilities. We've got, we've got certainly some counties in Colorado that will, that will not have a lot of capability. You know, counties that have more cows than people, you know?
Right.
Those types of counties. Then we've got counties like Douglas County, Colorado. They might not be looking for assistance for some time because it takes them longer, based on their task base and their population, to get through all of their resources being used. And I think in the past, it was a natural reaction maybe, let's call it state. Well, the state's gotten pretty good about asking you that key question. Have you talked to our resources yet? I mean, sometimes we don't think about it, really. I've been on incidents where we really didn't even think in those terms, we were just thinking, we just need help. And now, when we go back to that and analyze, oh yeah, maybe we have, and we're very close, or we can make the justification for why we're asking for more help. The Baltimore scenario, just watching that as an outsider, I was in South Dakota when that was happening, but I grew up in that area. Annapolis was my hometown. So you know exactly what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I lived in Towson for several years.
The Baltimore Police Department, I had no idea. Thirty-two hundred officers, eighth largest police department in the country.
That's a third of the size of the US Coast Guard.
Easily. And we were talking about it in the context of how many commissioned peace officers are in the state of Oregon. So that's probably half the size of all the commissioned officers in the state of Oregon. So as you watch that unfold, they probably hadn't run through all of their resources, but they needed a different capability. And so, the decision was, let's bring in the National Guard. Not because I've used to follow my officers, but I need a different capability. And so that can be a trigger just as much as what resources are left, and that was definitely something that was getting larger on them, very, very quickly, right? So it's all relative, depends on what the problem set is. And what's interesting about the Baltimore scenario, it starts out as a prisoner transport. That's how that incident started out, we talked about that yesterday. How many prisoner transport do you think go on in the country every day? But that one turned into something else, and very quickly, right? You saw a lot of these elements having to start to work together. So the NIMs or National Incident Management System, is that other doctrine or document provides a consistent nationwide template for us to put together governments to work together in an emergency, federal, state, tribal, local, private sector, NGOs, in the four pillars of emergency management, preparedness, prevention, response, recovery, and mitigation. And if we do it right, do it well, it's going to help reduce loss of lives, property, and harm to the environment. It's a flexible doctrine, not a specific plan for a specific issue. So think about it in that doctrine context. Command and management is one of the five components of NIMs. ICS lives here, the largest piece of command and management. Small agency coordination, we've been talking about that, are we putting different agencies together, and then putting out information to the public? All three of these items are important, I think, to agency administrators. This one particularly important, right? Are we talking constituents? Are we keeping them informed? Do we have to work with other governments? Whether that be locally, municipalities, within the county, you've got other governmental entities taking into consideration, special districts, you've got a university, that's actually a state entity, correct? So important that we figure that out, and then certainly, we have the professionals who are out there in the field, who are leading the charge on dealing with the incident specifically. NIMs and institutionalization, I'm sure you did this at some point, some adoption of NIMs, it probably happened a while ago, there was a big push for this in two thousand three, two thousand four. You're doing the training, your folks are doing the training, they are trained, well-trained in fact, I'll tell you. Didn't have them in class the last couple of days. Exercises, we're going to do that today, that's how we test and get better. I have no idea.
I was going to say, did you want us to call, is it your thing, or do you think it's our idea?
No, no, that's my computer. I've had that computer about four years, it's the first thing it's ever done that. Training of our folks, important. And then, long-term exercising, also important. So having an exercise path, maybe a two- or three-year program as you're building up to, you know, being ready for other events. Hazmat, certainly part of this also, in the mandates, some super fun mandates out there, and mandates from OSHA. So off the list, I think I heard this one, fire, right? You have that threat? Tornado? Not too much. Flood? Ice storm, earthquakes. About human animal disease outbreak, any potential for that?
Yep. We had a meningitis outbreak at University of Washington.
Yep, I've been reading about that.
We were in ICS for that.
Okay. Search and rescue missions? You ever have our folks go walking off? We have that in Colorado a lot.
But our search and rescue is retired, so we're...
So, okay. Hazmat? No idea. Murphy's Law. Only one in on TV. Terrorist incidents? National plan, national special security events.
You know, for those that are...
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure, we'd have to look at the list to see if the Olympic trials is on the official national special security events list. It could be, that's a special designation.
World Championships will be coming here in twenty twenty.
That will be, I'm sure.
And the world inwards are important of two kinds of systems.
In my previous life at EWEB, we did a lot of planning ahead of the first Olympic trials they held here.
Right.
Relative to making sure the water system was secure, and a few other things that people probably didn't know about.
Right, things that were going on, absolutely.
And we were working with Homeland Security.
Yeah, there you go. So, a lot of possibilities for using ICS and managing with ICS.
Back on the national special security event, we do tend to get international visitors at the University of Oregon. Sort of what is the level of, how important do people have to be before they get on that list?
I think it depends a little bit more, it may be the number of dignitaries that you have, it may be the time of year, maybe the location. We just had the World Alpine Ski Championships in Colorado, and interestingly enough, that did not make the list. And we had a hundred countries represented, and a lot of dignitaries. So that's, that's something that's probably handled at a little bit different level. The Super Bowl was the one that we always said, okay, that's on the list, Republican National Convention, Democratic National Convention, Olympics on our soil, those were almost automatics on the list, it was almost like there was only five or six. But now, they have moved that concept up into some other specific events. The presidential debates were on that list, but then, you know, World Alpine Ski didn't make that list. So I don't know how that actually gets formulated.
Who makes that?
That's at the federal level, and there are specific federal agencies then that are tasked to be part of the mission. So I was at the plant Steve Martin Democratic National Convention, we saw that in its full effect. There were a lot of capabilities around it, I didn't even know existed until that thing came to town. So any of those are examples or opportunities to use the Incident Command System, which helps us from a benefits perspective to meet the needs of the incident, any kind of size, put folks together from a variety of different organizations, give us logistical administrative support, and should be cost-effective if we are avoiding duplication. So in your handout, the next few slides are going to really go on page two, almost in order. These definitions of things like common terminology. Common terminology is important when we bring a bunch of different folks together. You know, it's just a simple concept of that we ought to have a language that we're going to use collectively to manage. Chain of command, certainly something that goes on at the lowest levels, at all levels of government. I always like to say, you know, who's married in here? Probably understands chain of command. Has he been married more than once? Maybe he didn't understand it the first time, right? I'm approaching thirty years of being married to my wife, and every time I look at that slide, I have to laugh. I had to check in a little earlier today. When are you coming home? Chain of command. The incident commander is going to be that focal point, that person at the top, that person at the top of the organization, that sets the objectives, helps in putting together information to go out to the public. Safety of responders, responsibility of the incident commander, and working with the other agencies. The incident commander can give three of those four jobs away, they become the command staff. The one job the incident commander cannot give away is setting the objectives. There are times that the incident commander needs to do that in conjunction with the agency administrator. In other words, the objectives need to match the will of the agency administrators for the agency having jurisdiction. They can't just go out there and do whatever they want if it's not in accordance with what the representative form of government wants. So the incident commander's true role is to provide that overall leadership, and take policy direction from the executive or senior officials. In other words, the incident commander has a boss on every incident. It's actually the agency administrator for the agency having jurisdiction. Every incident commander out there actually has a boss at some point. The role of the executive senior officials is to provide policy guidance, priorities, and objectives based on the situational needs, maybe based on the emergency plan, look at the oversight of resource coordination, and supporting that on scene command, and you might be doing that from the Emergency Operations Center or through dispatch. Command by definition is the act of directing, ordering, and controlling by virtue of an explicit statutory, regulatory, or delegated authority. So the sheriff has very specific statutory authorities, and that includes the folks that work under him. Same thing true for the fire department, same thing true for EMS, for the health department. Regulatory authorities might be more attuned to some federal regulations, so the EPA, in certain cases, have regulatory authority to manage an incident, depending on what it is. Corps of Engineers has some regulatory capabilities, US Department of Public Accounts. And if you don't have the first two, statutory or regulatory authority, then there has to be a delegation of authority given to whomever it is that's managing the problem. Where do you think that comes from? The delegation of authority.
The elected officials.
Has anyone had to go through that process of doing a delegation of authority?
We're discussing delegating the authority for flagration, declaration for unprotected areas, who are running administration, administrator right now, so pre-delegating.
Take a look at page nineteen of the handout I gave you, looks like you've got something that you've been working on. It's a pretty skinny, generic delegation of authority.
Little background on that, last year, there was a, I got a call in the middle of the night, I was chair, and I got a call in the middle of the night that we needed to open our forest camp. The call was actually from the sheriff, who was asking for permission or authority to open the forest camp as a command center, or the base camp for the fire fires.
Okay.
And I didn't want to say no to the sheriff.
You didn't?
I didn't have the authority to not say no to the sheriff.
Right.
But the staff covered it, and everything was fine.
Sure.
It all worked out very, very well in the end, but in the meantime, for a while there, we were actually handed outside of the parameters, which were high personal shit, I think.
Right.
The thumb call.
Sure. Never outside the parameters of your authority, everything was fine.
Yes, you...
Thank you for that.
It worked out, right?
It was all perfectly legal.
So the delegation that's provided to you is a generic, I mean absolutely generic example of a delegation of authority. These are just the topics, if we're doing a written version of that, that we try to get into the document. It is a legal document, certainly. I can tell you two stories. One story is a story about a fire that we had in Colorado in a mine shaft. It was a pretty deep mine shaft, four folks were killed in that. The undersheriff from the county knew a fire chief very well that was on a type-one incident management team, and called him over and said, you need to take this incident from me. So the fire chief says, well, I need the delegation of authority because I'm outside of what I normally was doing. So they're looking for a pen, they're trying to figure it out, and they grabbed the marker and wrote it on a whiteboard and took a picture of it, and that was the delegation of authority. So that's probably the smallest one I've ever heard of. The largest one I've ever heard of, in contrast, in Colorado, we had a pretty big fire in Glendale, Colorado, at Christmas time, it was called the Spanish Gates Apartments Fire, about twelve people were killed. And the city of Glendale is surrounded by the city and county of Denver, so it's only one square mile, they had their own fire department. The council got together after that incident and disbanded the fire department, and then had to do a delegation of authority to the city and county of Denver for them to come in and fight fire permanently within their town or their city limits. That delegation is probably a five-ring binder that's approved by the council every three or four years. So whether it's the whiteboard, or a three-ring binder, or something in between, it serves as a mechanism to put someone in place to carry out your wishes in an emergency that doesn't normally have, that doesn't already have the statutory or regulatory authority.
And we're going to assume that there's nothing to say there's a verbal declaration of that.
If, if at all possible, it's better to scratch it out on a napkin than to not, I would say. That would be my opinion, we'll ask.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would say the whiteboard is part of the law.
This goes back to the statutory law.
You can wipe her off the... I'm thinking about, you know, you spent like three million dollars on a whiteboard. Although I would, the argument in court would be pretty simple, I was going like, what, what we're...
Right.
So, yeah, that's, that's part of why we're, the board is, we're going through this is that, I'm just like the example, comparing this massive one with the one here, it's got the same information.
Right.
So we're trying to, from my perspective, far better to work it out in the game.
Absolutely right, absolutely right.
They can make the policy choice about, you know, either by time, or money, or whatever, how much authority they want to give to the county administrator, spend up to a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, three days you can spend whatever you want, whatever it is.
Right.
I'd rather have that free.
Sure, sure. And you can do it in a template too, I've seen that. In Colorado, we've got some strange laws, like many states. We're the only state that doesn't have a state fire marshal. The sheriff is the fire warden in every county. So the sheriff's responsible in that, in that state for wildland fire. But the sheriffs don't really want to do wildland fire, that's, most of them will tell you. I didn't even know that was my responsibility until after I got sworn in. So they will delegate authority to special fire districts, and then our process, once that district is, you know, overwhelmed, they go right to the state. Well, they come up with a, it's literally a template delegation that they can fill in the key pieces very quickly for the sheriff to transfer that statutory authority in this case to the fire district to deal with the wildland fire that's not in the municipality or the state. Kind of interesting, you know, it can be done that way, many, many other ways, but the preloading of it is... But the preloading of it is the key to that, right? It's a lot better to try to figure that stuff out before it's coming over the hill or whatever the problem is that you're facing.
So, Byron, the question, so the Thurston shooting, which is source of, that was about just a few months before I came over to the city council. So, while it occurred in Springfield, wasn't that pretty much a hands-on, all hands-on deck type?
Well, it was a, yeah, it was a joint jurisdiction because there were the homicides and the parents at the home in the county.
Which is in the county.
And the shooting at the school, so it was a very, required a very, yeah, approach to a different law enforcement jurisdictions.
I was president of the Eugene City Council when that happened, but I was in Scotland also when it happened. But Eugene was really, didn't have the grid to do, other than the command center was established.
Yeah, I think there was some medical assistance.
Your fire life safety.
Yeah. I'm not sure what kind of law enforcement support in that, on the early stage. Springfield, kind of the final, once everything got stabilized from the emergency scene, Springfield was primarily responsible for the school. County was primarily responsible for the event at the time. And then they were jointly coordinating with the DSS officers and prosecutors.
Because the other aspect of that is that prior to Columbine, that was the worst school shooting in the country in the United States. And so, all of a sudden, within hours, you had every national media.
Oh, yeah.
Which is all part of the, to me, it's all just as much part of the incident commander piece as how you deal with that.
Right.
And it was pretty amazing, I thought, overall, how folks dealt with that. Rosie Prior did a very good job, she was the communications person for Springfield at the time, but a lot of people came in to help on that one. That was huge. But that's, to me, that was just as big a part, because next thing you know.
Oh, yeah.
CNN trucks and NBC and everything else was like, boom, right there, and you were wondering, how'd they get here so quickly?
Right.
I mean, that's what I couldn't believe. Did they fly them in?
Sure. So, that example really lends to the important concept that every incident starts and ends locally. That's, that's one element of it. That jurisdictional boundary ultimately is a driving force as to which agency administrators are engaged, or maybe we have to have more than one. You've mentioned Columbine, certainly you've heard of the Aurora Theater shooting. We had a shooting also last year in Arapahoe County, which is the county I live in. There's about an eight and a half mile circumference that all three of those incidents have occurred. Our office at Blue Cell is in that eight and a half mile. So, we're at ground zero from that perspective and get to see a lot of that up close and personal. My wife was actually called for jury duty for the trial, but they actually, I think they called everybody in the county, they called something like 17,000 people. And she was telling me, of course, I can't tell you the trial that I might be part of. Like, really? Is that big of a secret?
Let me turn on the TV.
But she really didn't want to be a part of it, just got dismissed here in the last couple of weeks.
She doesn't want to spend three months on a jury?
I said, hey, they liked the book. We said, I can come off the road, right? Nons and coordination in terms of multi-agency, that's the process of putting government together. So, the command piece, I think we explored that. The coordination piece certainly is working together with our partners. That delegation of authority, I think we've explored that thoroughly, too.
Actually, on the delegation of authority, in the military, there is a, the authority is delegated all the way down, so it's in place. But with a form like this, at some point, I can foresee a time when there's nobody here who's able to sign it, and somebody has to have authority. So...
That's a, that's an interesting dilemma potentially, and that's where your continuity of operations or your succession planning becomes really important. If you're in need of doing a delegation and you don't have enough of the commission or even any of the commission available, you know, what then do you, do you do?
Yeah, when the staff sergeant becomes a commander.
Exactly right. Exactly right.
Our emergency operations plan does list a succession minute, starting with the board chair, the vice chair, the senior board member, county administrator, sheriff, and then the sheriff's chain of command. That leaves out the structure of the incident command.
That's in play.
It's interesting you should bring that up, because when we talk about doing this delegation, doing this thing in advance, that's, when I looked at the, one of the things that struck me was doing one with multiple.
City George, yeah.
Yeah, well, and multiple desert needs. In other words, in the event this person isn't available, then go to this person, this person, rather than have 17 delegations.
Right.
It sounds like before I got that.
And you wanted to, you want your, the documents that your local council is preparing to match your plan, certainly. So, yeah. It's rare. We talked about this quite a bit in the, in the EOC class. We brought up the Al Haig scenario, experience, whatever you want to call it. And really, and really talked about that academically. Right, the "I'm in charge," and was he correct or not? And he's vilified as not being correct, but in reality, he was correct.
At that point, his son, right?
That's right. At that moment, he was on scene and able to take actions if necessary. So, not only is there that requirement that we have the right succession, but we have to have the person maybe physically available, at least in that case, to be able to do certain actions. All right. So, in summary, the incident commander's role on the left, pretty clear. The agency executives and senior officials on the right. Policy, mission, strategic direction, and authority. Those are the things that become the role for the executive group during an emergency. And to have contact and conversation with that incident commander need be as to what your wishes are in the emergency.
When I was looking at these materials, the one for the work session, how, I mean, it seems to me that there's a generic, if you will, a very general, broad delegation that they can do, that the board, that the, in our case, the board, I'll just, excuse me, the board, can do in advance, but because you can't possibly do what the strategy or the mission is when you don't know what the...
Right.
What the incident.
Right. So, you have to have, I mean, in, in real time, you have to have good information to make those decisions on, and every incident's a little bit different. And your source for that information is the incident commander.
So, and again, from my perspective, setting this up for the board, what we're really doing with the, with the sort of general one is providing that initial stopgap direction for how many hours, two, three days, so they can theoretically meet and say, okay, it's a wildfire, so they could do their policy to it, wait, or whatever.
Right, sure. Exactly right. Exactly right. The spending piece is important. And the, the public information piece, I think is really important. So, that the message is going out the way you want it to go out. On the spending piece, it may be more, we understand you're going to have to spend money, but check in with us every hour or every three hours, or once you hit a threshold, please let us know. You know, that's, that's usually the way the, the spending works, just so that in two days, you don't end up with a $10 million bill and you're expecting a one-day dollar.
Do they have to, assuming that they delegate county admin, or make the county administrator know personally, we can only spend up to $200,000 for that commission, so we actually have legal constraints.
You have a constraint there, right. I gave the city of Eugene a scenario two days ago as part of their class, and it was a wildfire. And it was, I think it came out of the county into the city. And as we were just getting going, spent $100,000 in about four to five minutes. I mean, that's just, that's just reality. And so, to get to 200, 300, it doesn't take very long. The other thing that was interesting, they were exploring the declaration of disaster, the declaration of an emergency, and who needs to be part of that. And it was interesting. I think it's the city manager needs the city coun, a city council member has to attempt to contact all others and then can act from that point forward. Just interestingly, we're attempting to contact, not even make contact, but then can make the call on a disaster declaration.
Back to the Thurston example. You know, the police response was the city of Springfield Police. The city of Springfield Fire Department was the initial fire life safety response. The county sheriff was called in to investigate the murders because the murders occurred in unincorporated.
Right.
Other than that, I don't think Wayne County government was involved in it.
Right.
So, one question would be, like in that, if you were following this whole protocol, would there be one incident commander or would there be two?
Well, that incident probably was two, right?
There were two separate scenes.
Yeah, there were two separate scenes, so each scene had an incident commander, and you could have sort of unified that and supported that through an EOC, especially with the media component. You know, we've done multiple crime scene events simultaneously with multiple resources. That, the complexity of that one where they came from the external pressures because of the media.
Yeah. Byron, we, when we greeted Clinton at the airport, you guys escorted him from the airport to Thurston. So, I believe there's been more than one of them.
Yeah, I don't remember. But, yeah, we have been, for any of the presidential visits or the presidential end of visits, there's a coordinated effort with the Secret Service, there's been their detection processes.
And the county, the airport didn't support it, it's in the county.
Yeah. Great. All right. Let's take a look at page four. I'm giving up on this right now.
Diana could put that.
I ditched Diana, just because she's her friend.
I had an aunt who taught school for 50 years. I come from a long line of schoolteachers, and she's a gentleman force guy. You're not much of a teacher, you need that PowerPoint. She probably was a chalkboard instructor, right? So, on page four, you see the incident command structure beyond just the incident commander, public information officer, safety officer, and liaison officer. The officers then see what goes on below in terms of the sections. The operations section is where most of the workers are going to be. The planning section is trying to look at the horizon, while operations is looking at their shootouts. Logistics is there to support all the folks in the operations section. Logistics will be usually the second largest section in support of that. And then certainly the finance section, important to anything that we do. On page five and beyond, from five, six, seven, eight, and nine, the, in greater detail, definitions of those positions.
You know, that's the battalion command staff, right? That is exactly right. Or the battalion command staff, like we're right here, right?
And we'll bring those staff down into command with three individuals, and then the general staff has four individuals for the section.
So, I thought it was interesting when you described it in the city of Eugene because in the city of Eugene, while the mayor and council are stifled, they're not, they're not thought of as full-time. It's the same as in Springfield. Springfield's a manager, council, former government, so the mayor and city council are all volunteers, not full-time. We're here, I think it's interesting with the structure here, what Byron was describing, is having the board chair, vice chair, senior member along with, because we're, we're full-time.
Sure, right.
And have more of that executive, maybe a little bit of executive authority, where in the city, city manager clearly has that.
Right.
And so, I understand why, attempt.
Sure.
And that's really what it is, but the city manager ultimately has that, that authority to, unless it requires a vote to expend certain amount of money, then you can call that emergency meeting together.
And it's a, it's a strong managerial, strong seeing managerial form.
Very much so.
And there's, there's a lot of those around anymore that we run into.
We're, I don't know. We're, like, say, like, we're, see, we're from hell, right? I mean, we are 24/7.
If you've got power, is it on battery or electric?
No, yeah, I've got, yeah. Yeah.
I can't sell that shirt.
Yeah. That's all I know. Yeah, well, we're almost through. I just sent a message down to see where they are. So, that little bit of who does what, that's laid out in the document that we're sharing with you. Modular organization, out in the field, it builds from the ground up. So, we build those structures based on the needs and the objectives that are available. Incident complexity is certainly a factor. Everybody remember this picture? I just went through the anniversary for that, right?
A long time ago.
So, in a more complex incident, a structure would look like this to manage it. In a single car accident, a very small structure. So, the complexity and the resource needs do drive what the managerial structure looks like. Certainly in this type of scenario, we would need all forms of government to be communicating.
Is that the Oklahoma courthouse?
Yeah, Murrellville, absolutely.
All right. With that, on page 10.
Play some more.
My glasses are in the bag, I was using them. Really smart, right?
Yeah, seriously. See, I'm just going to get one of those.
Agency representative is important. They work through the liaison officer, they'll be there to represent their agency, get multiple agencies involved. Technical specialist, any number of technical specialists, even beyond the list that you see, could be part of an incident. I think sometimes it's, it's okay to have technical specialists address your body, depending on what the scenario is, because you just may need a technical expert to give you a viewpoint on what's going on out there in the field. On the next page, information and intelligence, a factor, something that we look at, and incident management. That can be housed in any number of places and used a number of different ways. Unified command on the next page, don't hear that term used quite a bit. That's where you have more than one incident commander, working together at the top of a structure to set the objectives and prioritize what's going to go on out there in the field. So, it could be police, fire, EMS, working together to figure out the overall objectives and working together. This example, fire, law enforcement, search and rescue, putting together that common set of objectives and some strategies.
So, I noticed on the slide that proceeds down there is, you know, the bottom part. So, the idea would be that each one of those individuals has some statutory, whatever authority.
Correct, correct.
So, you, but the problem goes beyond that line of authority, so you need to have people in, like, fire, like, law enforcement, like, the search and rescue person can't be fired by law enforcement.
Right, exactly right. Exactly right. And they've got different obje, not only do they have different authorities, they have different objectives. And the trick to unify command is to, to take all of those objectives and prioritize them, to do them in the correct order. That's, that's really what unified command is about.
Is there a hierarchy in that, for instance, like in a combined operation, where it's one agency taking, because I can see two people being in charge. I'm in charge of these guys, you're in charge of those guys. So, if infantry is in a combined operation with armor, infantry takes and then armor to support infantry.
Right. So, I think the same concept that absolutely exists, because if you've got three leaders at the top and you have a, and you have a full set of objectives, one of them will have more objectives than the others. So, at that given point in time, if this is a triangle, they're the top of that triangle. But as the objectives change, who's on top in that triangle probably changes.
Hopefully, they agree.
And well...
In the public safety realm, you know, per...
In the public safety realm, you know, perfect example of unified command is going back to the school shooting scenario. And the good thing about a public safety, the roof of unified command between law enforcement and fire, we all have the same priorities, life safety, and then, you know, it goes down from there to, you know, safety of property and safety of environment. And, and so the first objective is always gonna be life safety, and then, once that's stabilized and there's no more life safety risks, then it's the next objective, and, and does there have, is there a legal trump or a priority trump?
There's a police keeper of the park, you pick one.
Well, it's unified, I mean, they both are essentially, you're, you're sharing resources, you're, you're sharing with each other what your resources are doing, you're sharing your objectives and you're sharing your priorities, so we all would agree at the front end, if it's a life safety, let's get in there and get all life safety concerns resolved. At that point, then law enforcement, their objective rises to the top, and fire, in the unified command recognizes that, and then law enforcement is able to manage the crime scene before there's evidence destruction done intentionally, uh, through maybe not the highest priorities function. But you can't manage those priorities without a unified interface. And so this happens routinely in, in the field, between law enforcement and fire staff, every shift, we have some sort of a unified response, not necessarily formalized, but because you're there together, we, we know each other's roles and responsibilities, we're able to work through those and know it's time for law enforcement to step aside and let, let fire or, or medic staff do their thing, and then they know it's their time to stand aside and let us stay our priority, and we'll work through it. Sometimes they can do jointly, nobody has to stand down.
And see, the thing that, uh, the first thing I thought of is that, with the exceptions of Steve and I, a lot of the potential of people who are gonna be doing this are, you're gonna be, at least legally speaking, you're gonna be co-equals, because sheriff isn't independently elected official, the district attorney isn't independently elected official, you're all independently elected, you know what I mean? So it's not like, so it does require some consensus and agreement for, for it to work, because theory could work just in this.
Sure. Unified command is really about relationships.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, because the, the first concern is really interesting, uh, going through that, because the first objective, you, you had to secure the situation and figure out who was who, you know, what four kids were on top of the suspect and who was the actual suspect, and, you know, kind of going through that first. Fire life safety falling behind because you had children, the kids who were either had passed away or were injured, you know, severely, and, and it was really interesting, so thank God that yet that, what I can say is that Chief DeBors at the time, and Chief Murphy, the relationships were strong.
Right.
And knew exactly who was gonna take care of what, there was no imp, impeding, and I think that's why that ended up working out so successfully, at least after the incident. Dennis, the fire chief told me, they had every person who was injured transported within less than a night, so all kids were transported.
Wow.
Yeah, there was 20, like 25 total.
Big incident.
Injuries, yeah. I, I don't have much confidence that that could happen every single time, however.
Oh, that, it, it doesn't happen every single time. In fact, you're probably more correct when you have the command personnel getting together in a room or at a, at a command point. The reality for us, the business for us, is that it happens every time at the field level, because the same medics, the same firemen, and the same deputies, troopers and police officers are spawned together every night, all the time, all the time. And so they have relationships and they have, they've practiced this in reality every day. The problems, the turf wars will come when rank shows up and they start trying to establish shared command that might not be so equally shared and those kinds of things, and that's where building the relationships before these crises occur.
I, I witnessed it, everybody's doing it at the time.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right. So just to close it out, uh, multi-agency coordination, sometimes we'll need to coordinate with other governmental entities. It is a system out there that's working between command, dispatch, the agency administrators, the board in this case, emergency operations center, and a place where we're going to get things, it kind of is this, uh, really this concentric circle of, uh, capability that has to be brought together. All right.
Um, quick question.
Yes.
On that Thurston, the board, our board wasn't involved in that. I mean, it was just, the professionals were doing their job.
Right.
What, what is the role of the, uh, board in, in something that horrific and big? Do you think that, are they supposed to be involved or, I mean, and from my point of view, people are just doing their jobs. And they did their jobs, and it was a horrible thing, but it was handled.
But I would, I think, what I would think, that I think that worked out that way, but I think what we're learning here is that there should be a, in theory, there should be a contingency plan, in other words, what if they had called the county and said, we need whatever, right now, it would have exceeded the county administrator's authority. It'd be nice to have in place, oh, you guys need what turns out to be $125,000 worth of hundred works of work.
Right.
I think that's where we're supposed to be thinking down.
Absolutely.
It's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be a bigger, a potentially bigger event to trigger this, uh, IC.
Or an event that triggers the need for your authorities as a policy group, whether it's financing approval or whether it's just general policy, are we going to agree as a county to do this as opposed to this, maybe an actual disaster, maybe there's a huge environmental decision.
Right.
And, and you decide, you know what, if it's a life safety concern, we'll set the environment aside, maybe, you know, a community concerned that you'll have to visit later, but that's a policy piece, that the sheriff or the fire service can't make, and we need your policy to do that, and/or finances.
And that's, I, I was just saying, the legal constraints are, are almost all around the money issue. And so I could, I mean, I could see a, a single event where somebody came, uh, like you mentioned, by a deadline, so it's over dark 30, you know, some truck runs off, where it starts going, you know, gasoline trucks go, or reduce, that doesn't, and we can't do anything, they call, and it's some small outlying agency that says, we need this, and they call Steve, and Steve says, we out, we've got whatever, you know, whatever we've got, whatever it was, but just rolling that out, it suits his authority. I mean, we know, and we know who sends that, that many staff members, that many people, it's gonna be a hundred thousand, four thousand, a hundred thousand, which should get on, you know, the man, or the coach, excuse me, says, all right, so I can see on that.
You know, I have supreme confidence that these guys can handle stuff like that. What do you do? And I don't think, what I'm concerned about more is multiple simultaneous strikes.
Sure.
And that is something that I don't know how we do it. You know, with Y2K, for instance, we had a command post set up, and they were gonna go bring the city councilors to the command post.
Right.
But, you know, so let's say ISIS hits Portland, Salem, and maybe it can be Eugene.
Or hits Portland, Salem, and Medford, and skips Eugene.
Precisely.
Now what do you do?
Right.
Do you give resources, or do you think maybe we're next? Those are the kind of, right, those, that's, that's, that's the, that's the policy decision right there.
Generally where the board will end up involved is in longer term, right? Like when you get to the third day of a 1996 flood, or, or, or where, where, where in the seduction zone situation, there's gonna be so many different decisions to make as to, you know, how we're gonna deal with, you know, public safety, you know, how we're gonna evacuate, how we're gonna, how we're gonna get to this community that had to cut off because of all the bridges.
It's an allocation of resources decision.
Yeah. We won't be running that command structure, but they're gonna be coming to us saying, okay, we can either, you know, which is more important to you, doing A or B as a policy, you know?
Here's a.
Because our unified command, our unified command is not in agreement here, we're turning to.
And I, the only honest thing about it is, I can see that, you know, Mr. I worry that if, that someone is gonna disagree with that decision, and I hate to see someone dredge up, well, how much did, you know, Steve made this decision, how much did it cost to send this thing back to the board? Isn't he constrained by the code? How, how did he spend more than a hundred thousand dollars? So that's what I'd like to have, I mean, I'm sure.
And therefore, team are likely responsible for it, because they didn't have the authority to spend that in the first place.
That's a possibility, too.
But you see, but part of it's also that long-term, you know, the incident's not over till everything's been paid for.
Correct. And North, we were just talking about, North Bridge just closed out, North Bridge earthquake, 22 years, just closed out. So that community, at some level, has been dealing with that for 22 years through probably several changeovers personnel within their governments.
And that was multiple simultaneous strikes, different communities were at the same time, so do we send the resources for Old Bridge or, or Midbridge?
Right.
No, I have one set of resources.
Right.
Sheriff, you ready to make a point?
Oh, as Jay mentioned, evacuations, and it brought me back to just our most recent emergency management effort with the Westover fires. And we had the discussion about, we were sending staff up to notify, for people on preparation for evacuation, and the question was asked, what can we make people leave? Or if they don't think, can we arrest them and take them out of there? And so the answer to that is no, we can't, unless or until the board meets and declares a state of emergency, and upon that authority, then law enforcement then can act and force people against threat of arrest to vacate the area. So that would be another policy piece where, in that case, we weren't seeing that being a critical issue or rising, but in certain circumstances where they, in an environment that we really need to force evacuation and have an area absolutely vacant, we have a policy piece that in maybe a smaller event, you would still be engaged in.
Declaration of a curfew.
Yeah, curfews, quarantines, tough, evacuation, tough. I use a few Florida examples where during hurricane response, uh, it's a policy decision. How much fuel can you buy? Suspending the sale of alcohol, suspending the sale of firearms, suspending the sale of ammunition, really serious stuff that can sometimes upset folks even more than the fact that they're being asked to evacuate. So, uh, it's, it's any of those types of items, and the, the incident command has to have a place to turn to, to try to get some of those decisions, uh, done if possible.
Just think of people on a pole, breaking, and they should have lifted up.
I was gonna say, had the coast guard gone to Red Shabbard ahead of the actual shooting incident, it might have.
That's pretty good.
Well, like, this didn't, uh, didn't include Lain County, but I took the Stotson fire from last year, I mean, I don't remember how many alarms that was, but what triggers not just Eugene, Springfield fire life safety, but the other outline, there were so many different fire departments involved in that because of the potential.
Right.
I mean, that could have happened, I mean, it was really interesting, um, you know, what triggered that? All of a sudden you're getting, because I remember going up north and all of a sudden you're seeing trucks going, coming, I don't know where they were coming from, down this way, so what triggered that to have all these different fire departments?
And that's another perfect example of a local unified command event, unified command amongst the fire district.
Yeah.
But also we had a lieutenant there from the sheriff's office, already state police in Springfield, city police, and they unified structured for traffic.
For traffic.
For the traffic. Yeah, but that was, that was probably right out of threshold, probably fundamentally extending the LC, I don't know if there were discussions about doing that or not, but, um, that one was starting to creep big.
Up there, and a lot of people when they got in, watched.
Oh, yeah, that, that happens too. On page, uh, 15, uh, a really good conversation and a good question about, you know, when, when do we get engaged? Here's the, uh, incident types by definition. Type five incidents, very routine, going on all the time. Type four, there may be some additional leadership out there, maybe it's gonna be handled within a few hours. The type three incidents, multiple jurisdictions, multiple operational periods. That one may get our attention, certainly type two and type one incidents, where you get a lot of responders in your community that are working.
Is that like a big fire?
Sure.
Would be the one.
Sure.
Yeah, think about how many law enforcement firefighters might be out on the Douglas complex when that was going.
Right, exactly. Probably 1,500, somewhere around there. There's a lot.
It's a creep day, and, um, at one time there, they had 100 and 140 actual fires.
Right.
And then, the main one that just blew up, they brought people everywhere.
Seems like they were 900, 800, 900 staff at one point, maybe that was too high, I don't know. For Roldo Canyon, which is our big event in Colorado a few years ago, which is called Colorado Springs, uh, High Park was going on in Fort Collins, then we actually had another fire in Boulder at the same time. We had 5,000 of the 25,000 law enforcement firefighters in the country in our state. That's big.
That's one.
Right, that, that doesn't even have a number. Out of, out of control.
No, Oregon's run like that, this school's run like that.
I've been hearing that as I'm traveling around, I keep hearing that, you guys are kind of dry. Uh, page 16 and 17, just a little readiness checklist, and then page, uh, 18, tips we're doing after action abuse. Managing the public information piece, uh, it does bear some particular attention, so I'll kind of end with this slide, simply because, uh, you aptly brought up the fact that when the national news media shows upon your doorstep, it changes everything. It, it really does. It'll change the strategies, it'll change the thought processes, it'll, it'll, it'll have a huge impact. Uh, so it is important that, uh, managing that at the scene, managing that from an emergency operations center perspective, managing that as, as a board or as agency administrators, really important that we get the right message out, and, um, and that we have consistency and thought process that goes along with that, because you really do want the message to be exactly what you want to be, and that's out there.
Well, it's really interesting, and I, I don't mean to prolong this on the Thurston shooting, but it is, what was really interesting about that, this is where I think the communications piece came into play, because you also have a highly active investigation going on.
Sure.
And so it was very, uh, it was actually Greg Shaver, who was the president of the city council, actually was put out there more in the public than anybody else, even more than there are more set. I think part of it is because he was very disciplined on the messaging, what he can say, what he can't say, he was very good on pivoting and saying, I can't go there, can't go there, because it's an active investigation, therefore you can't mess it up, you know, because obviously one day it's gonna go to trial.
Right.
So I, that, that, because it was so, that was, you know, all of a sudden, here we are, a little Springfield, Oregon, and they're everywhere.
Everywhere.
And, um, got moved.
That was one of the strengths that I'm really talking about.
He was good, he was great, yeah, he did a great job.
I hope they're telling them they haven't been quiet for a while.
Okay, let's open it up for a few questions, if you have any, happy to try to answer them for you.
I'm just curious to even, uh, I'm looking at the Google checklist, is there a place where they have, there ought to be a place to have like, uh, like sample, uh, or sort of generic origin, subacquisition, disevacuation orders, something like that? I was doing, like, somebody's done them before, I'm a master.
Absolutely, I, I'd ask, uh, I'd ask Linda on that.
Okay.
Sure, Steve might have that.
They, yeah.
Say something, or a.
I hate to tell you this, but you could probably, put it in Google.
You'd surprise them.
And believe it or not, yeah, you'll get some great stuff. Uh, but people also actually have a, uh, a website that, um, if I can throw it up there. That, that is a, a great source to, for a lot of this.
And I think that, is it the Oregon military?
That is actually the emergency operating folks for the state of Oregon.
Yeah, emergency management is under, I think, your department's military affairs.
Yeah, and, and I think they would probably have Oregon-centric, that would not, that would meet the state law.
Here's a few of those, uh, websites. The ICS Resource Center, that's more training, the NIMS Resource Center, uh, but I think Chair's exactly right, I'd start with your state emergency management folks, because if nothing else, they could point you in the direction of, oh, here's similar counties to yours and what they've done, and they have, they have that data, right? So that would make sense.
Um, in the course of all your work and all this, do you have any suggestions, you know, specifically pertinent to a board of commissioners? specifically pertinent to a board of commissioners in a big county? You've dealt with cities, you've dealt with counties, dealt with fire districts, all kinds of different state, federal agencies, what kinds of things we could tell us to watch out for, to be aware of, to do, and even some horror stories of what people haven't done, when they haven't done what you are about to tell me to do?
Sure. I think the concept of the work session, at least once a year, on this topic, is probably the best advice that I could give you. Because if several years go by, and you don't have a disaster, the opportunities to practice, believe it or not, aren't there. So to kind of at least keep it on the forefront, and touch base on your emergency operations plan, and any changes that have come up, and maybe even looking at after actions from other places, or if you've had an event in the last year, that is, I think, the most appropriate thing that I could advise to you. Sending you to a week of FEMA training is not what I would advise, that just may not be a good use of your time. But if you go too long without visiting this, and then something does happen, you're playing that learning curve during the incident, I think that can be very, very difficult. When I did the first Denver four oh two class, it was years ago, and it was tough, they asked questions that no one had ever heard of before, but then they called a year later and said, hey, we want you to come back and do the class again. And I thought, why on earth do we need to do that class again? Well, part of the council had changed, and then they made it kind of an annual opportunity, even if it's to see the same slides again, if nothing else, just to stay with it at Arms Reach. Then we started to have incidents, and that certainly brought a lot of things to light. Now they could probably teach me in the classroom, I've grown up there lately.
But I was thinking we would add, some of these things, I was thinking the same exact thing, are not necessarily the class, but one of the things I could bring into the floor is this, because there could be a change in terms of how we do this succession, or some of this other stuff, because other people could change. We could put this as one of those annual things that gets renewed, you know, that in order, you know, this thing, the declaration comes up every year, it's caused for, you know, doing more changing things, or whatever these put on the floor. Like, we do all those routine ones at the beginning of January, and it's going to be another one that we stick up there that kind of pulls it up, and we say, okay, gosh, it is, it's emergency declaration thing, you know, we worked with Byron, but now there's a new sheriff. Gosh, then we should have one of these get-togethers to look out for the new sheriff.
That keeps it on the front burner, and I'm pretty confident, once again, the incidents that we've had, that we're talking about generally, and the ones we're most likely to have, was already experienced, but there are incidents that we've never experienced, and that's what I'm most concerned about. And Jay talks about subjectivity.
What if we had a subject?
Every county, every city in Lake County would need additional resources, and we won't have it.
And we're not going to be able to get it from our neighboring counties, because they'll be dealing with the same, and it's going to be a very serious incident for us to deal with in the county.
So the other, just as a second aside, you know, I'm not trying to give you homework. The, at some point, you probably, as a jurisdiction did, either an executive order proclamation that legislates with regard to NIMs, and it was probably done in two thousand and three or two thousand and four, in that timeframe, you might revisit that, and see exactly what our NIMs proclamation said then, and does it need to say something different today? And every jurisdiction pretty much had to do it.
Sheriff and Diana email asking. Just to get a note of that. Thank you.
I've already done it.
Thank you.
Steve, you have a question? I'm interested in your thoughts about jurisdictional cooperation, or the number of public agencies, city, local, state, and county, and counting a lot of other public agencies, and why the purposes of ICS is identifying the appropriate roles and responsibilities of individuals and agencies, and making sure that individuals and agencies play their appropriate role and responsibility, but don't step out at every role? So I'm just, I'm interested in your thoughts around how to clearly define, for the county to understand its role in an emergency event, as well as how we practice and execute the coordination with other jurisdictions throughout the year.
Right. So the, you know, you can put it in steps, I think. Step one is to, internally, a step is what you believe your role is. Step two would be to reach out to those other jurisdictions and meet with them, and then step three might be to do a tabletop exercise with them, in that order. Really important, I think, the first step, just to make sure that everyone's comfortable with what you believe the role's going to be. If you do it out of order, you run the risk of making the relationship maybe even more strained, and you haven't even had an incident yet. I've seen that happen. And then you're maybe years behind the curve. So that is the most effective way. We have a thou, at Blue So, we have a thousand customers nationwide, so it's a lot of jurisdictions, and they all have very similar challenges, which is very interesting. So my recommendation is really based on working with a lot of those jurisdictions on, how do we work those things out, or something's gone wrong in the past.
How did you work it out, and how would you have to do it again?
Right. So internally, what's our role? Meeting with those other jurisdictions to talk about roles, and then doing a tabletop exercise, not a full scale, not a functional, a tabletop exercise, which is a discussion-based exercise, a little lower intensity, there's a tendency where we go right to those full scales, folks could, you know, you're spending a lot of money for one, because you're actually roaming equipment, and sometimes folks don't actually play it out the way they really would, it's almost better to discuss it first. So that would be an approach.
I've seen it, but not everybody knows that it is, and people think it's really happening.
That's a red test. We don't do too much of that. That's almost, that's almost forbidden. In the military, that is a very common approach, right? In the Marine Corps, we kind of go through that, and you really didn't know, but that's the way they wanted it, but it's a whole, that's a different world.
That way it's too much. That radio plays in Springfield though.
Yeah. Jay, I don't think it's about what happens, I just got to.
They're doing War of the World in Springfield.
And the role of subjectivity.
Yeah, yeah.
To you, what a subjectivity here.
So the scenario downstairs is going to start in ten minutes. So I'm not sure, sir, how you need to.
For us.
Oh, you worry a little bit.
Yeah. So for us, we are going, in a minute, I'm going to adjourn our work session, and we are officially going to be taking a tour as a board of the Emergency Operations Center participates in this exercise. That, you know, one of the things we have to deal with as a board is we also are, I think, under public meetings.
I understand.
Yes, the state of Oregon, so because we can't report this exercise, we're considering a tour by the board of the Emergency Operations Center and participate in this exercise. So that's how we are, you know, under public meetings, law is dealing with this, so I will ask the board, please do not discuss any upcoming county business, or deliberate, or anything of that nature. We're there to understand how this ICS system works, and we participate in the exercise, so we can understand our roles, should they happen in the future. It's all an exercise, so we're not making a real decision for the county at this time on any policy, or deliberating toward anything that's going to be coming before the board in the future, but the information we find out on the board may help us in a future discussion, similar to if we went on a road tour, conditions of our roads, that's allowable under Oregon Public Meetings laws. So I will now adjourn our work session, and I'll see you all on our tour downstairs in the next five minutes, I guess.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.